Okay, I'm gonna call to order the Phoenix Oregon City Council meeting for September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Roll call, please.
Mayor Miohofer.
I'm here.
Counselor Cambros. Counselor Vermillion.
Here.
Counselor Suetos is absent. Counselor Chester.
Yeah.
Counselor Shunk is absent. And Counselor Dixon.
Yeah, present.
All right, we have a quorum.
Good. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Our Pledge of Allegiance should apply in the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under one individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, have your seats and we'll get started. All right, the first presentation is with the new Soretti Executive Director Blair Sundell. Please come up and welcome. I met Blair earlier today with a meeting of the Rogue Valley Mayors. And I can tell you he's ready for the job and I look forward to presenting him to the entire City Council of Phoenix, Oregon. Go ahead, Blair. Talk to us.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Miohofer, Council members and community members. My name is Blair Sundell and I'm honored to be here tonight as the new Executive Director of Soretti. I've been in this role for only two weeks, but I'm already energized to see the opportunities and further collaborate with Phoenix. I want to say that I'm gonna go off script here because I'd like to just give you my personal feel for why I'm in this position and what I want to do to help this community. So I'm a small-town boy, grew up in Selma, Oregon, and went to the Selma Elementary School, as it was at the time, there was a farmer's market. And then I went out to Illinois Valley High School and graduated from there and went on to SOU, built two businesses, and then went to work for the commercial lenders here in town. And then for the past eight years, I have worked at Business Oregon, supporting communities and economic development throughout the state. This opportunity presented itself and it was an opportunity that I could not pass up. I really see it as an opportunity of a lifetime. I have two small children and I want to see them grow up in a better Rogue Valley, a place that we have incredible momentum that we're building. And I want them to grow up and stay here, not just grow up and find opportunity elsewhere. So I have a passion for economic development, but the amazing team that I'm joined with here, we have Amy Brown, our Operations Manager, Terrell Roper, our Business Development Manager, and both of them can chime in on some of the projects that they're working on that have been supporting Phoenix so far. So if they'd like to join me for the Q and A portion, I will-
You want another seat up there?
Yeah.
Okay, let's see if we can do that. We have extra seats here.
I can lose my introduction and then-
Sir.
-work with you all.
Bring the gang up.
And Eric, I think we were Chamber of Leadership in two thousand and thirteen, is that right?
That's right.
Parts of the mission.
All right.
Okay, so I guess the words go down. We have a couple of projects that we've been working on for the city of Phoenix, and so we're gonna tell you a little bit about that and what Soretti's working on. The project that we have going on is part of the Peer Funds that comes from LHCs. I think most of you are aware that those funds have been awarded. The project that Soretti is involved with is the Phoenix Talent Economic Revitalization Program. So it is a project that has combined efforts with talent, TBA, and the Phoenix Chamber of Commerce. So I've been working closely with Will and Darby in leading those two projects. This project that has been approved will be lasting the next three years. And Soretti will be the fiscal manager, working to help bring this project to fruition. We will be working to help bring microenterprisetraining and technical assistance to both chambers. We'll be working on a business incubator and help with capacity and staffing for both of those organizations. That's the short Cliff Notes of that. If you have other questions, I'm happy to go deeper in depth, but just so you know that there is a project that we're working on with both the chambers in Phoenix and talent to help with revitalization of those organizations after the O B D layer.
So Amy, one of the questions is, is there a possibility of enough funding that we can get an individual that would help our chamber and maybe the talent chamber, somebody that would actually be funded and support and effort? Right now, we're all volunteer.
Mayor, that is in the budget. That is what's been proposed, is to have a full-time training coordinator for both the Phoenix Chamber and for the Talent Business Alliance Chamber. I can tell you that we are currently, we have not contracted with LHCs currently. We are in the contracting phase. So at this point, it's been proposed, budget is due to them by the end of this week. I do not see any issues with that going through, but I don't want to speak until the ink is signed on that contract with anything that has to do with Peer, as most of you guys know, it's a very complex program with those block grants. But it is proposed to have capacity built in for both organizations to have paid staff to help with these programs for the next three years.
Great. That's really needed here.
Absolutely.
Because our chamber's growing and all sorts of new ideas, but very short on help.
Absolutely. And that is written into the grant, that's written into the narrative and into the budget for both organizations.
Amy, could-
Go ahead.
Can you describe microenterprise? What are the parameters of microenterprise?
Is five or less employees, so businesses that are five or less.
Okay.
And it is very specific on this block grant for low to moderate income, and those might be enterprises. So it will be very small entrepreneurs and small businesses is really the focus that we'll have on this.
Amy, could you talk a little bit about the Innovation Hub, things that you've been doing? Because in the past, I went to at least two or three events at the Foodery, and they were really great. People getting up, throwing out their ideas, and then having people in the audience critique them and giving pointers for really moving ahead. And I think there's been probably some successful businesses that's come out of that process. So if you could talk about it and a little bit about Kim Fries and what she's done, please?
Absolutely. So that's a different project than we were, I was just talking about with Peer. So that's a different project that Soretti's been working on for the last four years. That's the Southern Oregon Innovation Hub. We were just granted some other funds through Business Oregon. We're still not contracted with that yet, but we just were given our notice of award for that for the next two years of funding. With that, and once we get contracted, we will bring back our Southern Oregon Innovation Hub Director, which is Dr. Kim Fries, and another half-time staff who will help us continue to run that program for the next two years. What we've seen over the last four years is a very successful innovation hub startup with our entrepreneurs and a bunch of pitch nights. There's been pitch nights all over the county, all over the region, from Josephine to Jackson County. They've been down with the Foodery with the flying flatbread. So we've had quite of it here in Phoenix, but one of the biggest ones that we have is held over in Josephine County every Wednesday with the One Million Cups. So we've also brought in, recently we had the Latino Pitch Night from Latino Foundos, was the first one they've had, south of Salem. We held that in Medford about three months ago, and we're able to present $10,000 worth of awards to entrepreneurs in our region. So the Southern Oregon Innovation Hub is something we're really proud of. It's a project of Soretti, it's under our Soretti umbrella, and it's something that is growing. We have incubator space that we're doing, we're looking at pitch nights that we do, we are looking at co-shared space, we're looking at commercial kitchens, we're looking at co-bottling, anything that we need co-packing to help with our entrepreneurs to go to the next space. I think that there's been a, there's been a notion with Soretti over the years that we've really just worked with trade and sector businesses, and that's not really what Soretti does. It's a focus that we've had years ago, but not so much anymore. Over the last four years, we've really focused in and realized that our entrepreneurs and our startup businesses is something that, that's a gap that we've had and somewhere that we really need to focus and help our entrepreneurs. So with this innovation hub and with this money that we've been granted from Business Oregon, it's really a focus that we've had. And our director with Dr. Kim Fries has really been helping us attack that and really help with that technical assistance and help those entrepreneurs grow.
Now, I've seen Kim Fries in action. The energy is unbelievable with her. Oh, my God. Just going against the wall and just watch her, you know, really fabulous person.
We hit a home run on that one. We actually had a patent workshop last week. Yeah, I think it was last week in Grants Pass. And so a free patent and workshop that they did, and I have got two patents that have already been started. So there's really some really dynamic stuff that's happening with the Innovation Hub. So stay tuned for that. There'll be more happening on this side of the mountain, too. Again, it's kind of in a pause stage because we haven't contracted for that funding yet. So she's really just trickling along here until we get that funding to come back. The last grant ended June thirtieth, and we're kind of waiting for the new funding to come through so we can really kick her into high gear. When that funding does come through, though, it'll be for $400,000. That's all passed through the Innovation Hub, not that it thoroughly stays with Soretti, but it will fund that project for two full years. In the past, we've only got it year after year after year. So each year, we have to go after the end of each year we get it. This one, we're really lucky that we'll have it for two full years. So we'll be able to have it ongoing for 24 months and really see how this will work for our community.
Any questions? Amy? Okay?
So, real quick.
Yes.
Well, I mean, it was a quick update on P H five.
Yeah.
Beady pad and recently chair.
Yeah, we've, thank you for allowing us to come talk as well, but we've had some recent meetings with city folks, Al, yourself, and Eric and Zach on P H three and P H five, on how we can best help the city promote markets and how we can best partner on that. And we've had some early conversations with Randy Jones from Ahar, Dan O'Connor from the city of Medford, and a couple of other individuals, Christabel's, our Board President was here. And we're really at kind of the beginning stages of this. We're gonna have another third meeting coming up probably sometime in October to meet with Dan O'Connor. He has a deck page that has already been basically put together from a marketing standpoint on how to best hopefully market P H three and P H five. There's some E-zone conversations that have been had. Part of P H three is already in the E-zone, P H five is already in the E-zone as well. There's some parts of it that we might, that we'll probably have to look at as far as bringing it into the E-zone, which requires some work on our end, working with the county, working with the city. But we'll start those efforts as soon as possible. But we're, you know, like I said really early, Randy Jones had some folks that were, excuse me, not Randy, Dan O'Connor had some folks that were interested in P H five and P H three a little while back. Everybody's kind of hitting the pause button on developments and relocations and expansions. It's kind of the climate change, who knows if that's administrative, you know, with the current administration going on. But those folks are kind of hitting the pause button on moving forward. But he has had folks in the past reach out to him and show an interest in coming here to Southern Oregon. So as those opportunities come up, and he's gonna continue to promote our area and kind of tell the story about it, which we will help promote that story as well as best we can. We got to see the infrastructure layout from Randy, you kind of where the water's going, where some of the roads are going. So it's all coming together really well, but like I said, we're really at the beginning stages. And so as we have further conversations, discussions, you know, there'll be more to come. We are the agencies, the agency, excuse me, with Business Oregon that handle all the recruitment and relocation leads that come through. So that doesn't mean that there's, you know, that's not the end-all-be-all, but we have site consultants reach out to us individually and ask us what we have in our area. So as things develop and as the properties develop, we'll be able to promote those more on Prospector and some of the other websites we use.
Any questions?
I thank you for all the information and for what you're doing. We had, there has been some concerns in the last couple of years, and so this is very exciting. Thank you for-
Yeah, I think it's really important to have a very close relationship with Soretti on the P H five activity. I mean, this is huge for us, and it's, you know, it's really an intensive opportunity for the future. And it's a huge area, very complex, parks, residential, industrial, and so forth. So we need your brains in this whole equation to make sure we're ready when we get the inquiries that are gonna come. And right now, we're putting in the infrastructure, but we also want to understand the marketing. That's why I'm really interested in Dan O'Connor's briefing. Okay? Any other, Eric, anything?
Thanks again, Blair.
Yeah.
I want to thank you guys for your time and having us be here. And thank you for the partnership, Eric and Zach. We really appreciate working with the city team, Al. Mayor, thank you very much for having us, and we look forward to all the good things we're gonna do with you guys in the future. So-
Thank you very much.
Take care. We'll be in touch. All right, we're gonna move ahead to Zach Moody coming up, and he's gonna talk about the peer project property acquisition process.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Actually, I'm gonna turn it over to the consultant, but I wanted to give you a brief, a brief explanation as to why this is on the agenda. So as you know, we have been working tirelessly for the last few years to get this peer project up off the ground. And we are at that point finally now where we can start moving on, putting the pieces together, including the property acquisition. And so for some of you that don't know, and some of you do, working with federal funds is very difficult. There's a lot of, there's a lot of things that you don't want to miss. And so oftentimes, governments will use the Rogue Valley Council's governments or other agencies to help out with that. It so happens that our H two engineers, our city engineer, has worked with Universal Field Services previously on other federal projects and established a good working relationship with them. And so we were able to have them subcontract through our engineer to help us through this process. And so again, we just want to make sure we're doing everything right. We don't want to trip up along the way. And so Seth Hemmelfield is from Universal Field Services, and I'm gonna turn it over to him, and he's going to just give you a little bit of a background on what their organization does and really about the process of property acquisition with federal funds, because there are some things that I wanted the council to just have a better understanding of as we go into that process. So, thank you. Seth?
Yeah, Zach, everybody can hear me there?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Yes, thanks, Zach, and council member, counsel and mayor. Yeah, I'm Seth Hemmelfield with Universal Field Services, right-of-way consultant, working all over Oregon and Southwest Washington. And yeah, the reason we were brought in on this project is when you use federal funds in a project, you're required to follow what's called the Uniform Act for acquisition and relocation. And part of that process is making sure that property owners that are impacted are receiving all of their benefits and protections under the federal laws. And so some of that process is why we get involved, because you have to follow the specific steps and make sure that you don't violate any of their rights. And then at the end of the process, make sure that the city's able to acquire the property that's needed. So I'll kind of jump into some of the steps, just so you're aware of kind of what you can expect coming forward for this project. The project's identified, I think, specific properties that they're wanting to acquire. The first step is then taking what those properties are and coming back to the council with a resolution of property acquisition. So basically, the council would approve that there's a public need for these properties and that they're willing to move forward with the acquisition process and basically authorize the next steps in acquiring, acquiring the property. At that point, once that's approved, that would be turned over to our team where we would start with some general notices to those properties that are impacted and the appraisal process. So one of the requirements of the Uniform Act is an independent appraiser that is knowledgeable with eminent domain type appraisals in Oregon. And then there's a second independent appraiser that would review that work. And once we have that gathered, we would bring it to the city to set what's called just compensation. And that's the amount of money that the property owner is due for the property rights needed for the project. So once we have those appraisals reviewed and reviewed by the city, just compensation is set, and that's when we would go out and present the offers to the property owners. There's some negotiation that can happen. They're given a copy of the appraisal. The owner is, you know, given a chance to review that. In Oregon, you get 40 days, or, I mean, that's the minimum in Oregon day for review of an offer before an agency can move forward with the eminent domain process. Majority, I would say, in my career, about ninety to ninety-five percent of all acquisitions usually gets settled with some type of agreement and doesn't, don't have to move into the more formal eminent domain process, which would be, if we aren't able to come to an agreement, the city would need to approve moving forward with condemnation process, which is a legal process by which the city would acquire the property and a court would decide the just compensation. So those are kind of the main steps in using federal funds or having federal funds in your project and needing to follow the Uniform Act. It's proper notices, the resolution for the city to acquire, and then on our end, it's specific letters that we have to provide the property owner and allowing enough time for the property owner to review the offer. Any questions?
Yeah, this is the mayor. A question on the timeline. Can you estimate roughly how long this might take? Because there's a lot of questions in our community about when are we gonna get the parking lots?
Oh, gotcha. Yeah, the average process for us is about, from start to finish, from where we have identified the properties to where we've acquired them, it's about six months, sometimes eight months, depending on how negotiations go. If there's really some, some, you know, arguments over the value of the property. But that's kind of your typical timeframe. It can go way faster. The appraisal process is usually one of the bigger timeframes is getting, there's only a handful of qualified appraisers in Oregon that can do eminent domain work. So getting on their schedule and then kind of getting expedited appraisals is usually the bigger timeframe, because we have to have all that before we can sit down with the property owner and present all that information to them. So.
Any other questions here from council? Go ahead. So you, you get an appraisal and you, your initial approach to the, and I don't want to get too specific, but in general, your initial approach to property owners is to offer a praise price?
Yeah, the city has the right to set just compensation. It can't be less than the appraised amount, but technically it can be more if there's an extenuating circumstances. There's some things that in the appraisal process, they can't necessarily pay for. So but then the city can authorize additional compensation if needed. That's why, that's why we have that third step before you go and meet with the property owner. But then we, we take all that information, the appraisal itself, and provide that to the owner with a copy of the offer. So.
Okay, have you been involved with this process with several properties around, I don't know where you are, but around the United States or in Oregon?
Mostly, my career's been in Oregon. So we're in Salem. So yeah, we're not that far away. I've done all over, all over Oregon, almost in Idaho, and, you know, far south is Ashland. So, yeah, we really, we've, we've been all over the place during this work.
Okay, and what percentage of property owners accept the appraised price?
Um, it's actually fairly, it's fairly, it's higher than you would probably think because we do have that appraisal that's really good evidence of the value. So I would say in my career, it's been like between fifty and sixty percent. A lot of times, what we end up negotiating over are like nuanced items that may have been missed or additional information that is provided by the property owner, once they, once they get a copy of the appraisal. We try to have the property owner attend the appraisal inspection so they can provide that information, and that helps determine the value. So it's usually about fifty to sixty percent settle at that amount.
Okay, and then I guess the next question, if, let's say you appraise a property at a hundred grand, and the property owner says, no, I don't accept that appraisal. I want, I want a hundred and fifteen. What happens next?
Yeah, what we usually do is ask for the owner's justification in that additional amount, and then bring that back to the, to the city and say, hey, you know, your offer was a hundred thousand. The, you know, the property owner is countering at a hundred and fifteen thousand, and here's why or why not that might be a good idea to make a settlement. And sometimes if, you know, if we're too far apart, the, the, the eminent domain process protects the city, but also the property owner for determining what that just compensation is for the amount paid for the property needed.
Okay, I guess I'm trying to understand this a little bit better. So does, does this process, I mean, the city doesn't have to pay anything if the appraised price becomes the final settled price? Is that correct?
Uh, well, yeah, the, the city would pay the appraised amount.
Okay.
Yeah, as a, as a part of the transaction.
Okay. And then any additional amount, the city's gonna have to kick in, right? If the property owner-
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay. I'm clear now. Yes?
Could I ask a couple of quick questions? So one, one is this is being funded by Peer, so land acquisition is a cost that's part of the grant. So-
Okay, that's what I meant, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, so it's part of what we budgeted. The other, the other one I wanted to mention was, in your opinion, when you have properties like this, that aren't, there are no homes or residence or businesses, what's the percentage of, is that, I mean, I would think that would increase the percentage of folks that would, it would make it easier, I guess.
Yes, yeah, definitely. Less impacts, impacts to improvements. And the more straightforward the, like, the transaction is, the easier the negotiations. We get a lot of, like, when we're working for ODOT, you know, and they're, they're gonna be acquiring somebody, half of somebody's front yard, that's a lot more difficult to negotiate than, than properties that don't have, you know, buildings and are just kind of vacant land. So.
Okay. Any other questions? I have no further questions. All right. Thank you, Seth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Zach. Okay, we're moving on to, it says here, Flock Safety and Oregon Organized Retail Crime Task Force with Chief Booker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. And before I pass this on, I'll just give you a quick download. What's going on? We currently have the opportunity to apply for a grant that would enable us to institute the, or purchase a Flock camera safety system. And Kristin McLeod from Flock is here, and she has a short presentation and is available to answer any questions, and I can answer any questions once she finishes.
And I'm gonna go ahead and give you permissions to share your screen, Kristin.
Thank you so much.
Okay, are you able to share now?
I don't see the ability to share screen, unfortunately.
I see on my end that you should be able to share. Let's see if I need to promote you to panelist here. Okay, now you should be able to go ahead.
Okay, yes, I think that worked wonderful.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor and Council and community. My name is Kristin McLeod. I'm a Public Affairs Manager with Flock Safety, and thank you so much for your time. It's a pleasure to be able to share some information about Flock Safety and how we are supporting community safety. To start off with a brief history on Flock as a company, we were actually founded back in two thousand and seventeen after our CEO, Garrett Langley, experienced an uptick of crime in his own neighborhood outside of Atlanta, Georgia. And frustrated with lack of case resolution, he went to local law enforcement, and he actually provided some personal doorbell footage that he had collected of the crime in progress and the suspects, and provided that to law enforcement. And while grateful, they unfortunately couldn't really use it as an investigative lead. And Garrett got really curious about that and started asking, well- And Garrett got really curious about that and started asking, well, what would be helpful in these cases? And law enforcement, he learned that the vast majority of crimes are committed in conjunction with use of a vehicle. And so vehicle details are really important, a license plate number, a description of the vehicle. And so he got to researching, learned that license plate readers, that technology had actually been around since the seventies. But what he also learned is that that technology was quite expensive for many communities. They just simply couldn't afford it. Um, many legacy companies often sold the data that was collected um to third parties. And um, it just often the, the technology outpaced the hardware. And so oftentimes, by the time a city would implement the cameras, the, again, the technology had outpaced the hardware and kind of rendered it useless. So Garrett saw the opportunity to really create a product and a company that provided an efficient, affordable, and also an ethical way to help uh bolster community safety. And so we started with our flagship product, the license plate readers, which will be a main focus tonight. Um, what we also have learned that across the country, many law enforcement agencies really struggle with resources. They are facing shortages of officers, hiring and retention challenges. And, excuse me. And that really impacts their ability to provide service to the community. So we see a lot of cities turning to technology, certainly not to replace officers, but really providing them a way to do more without having to increase staffing. So Flock is a company is really rooted and driven by a mission to help eliminate crime and shape a safer future together with the communities we serve. You have over a thousand mission-driven employees who really wholeheartedly believe um in this mission and work hard to provide services to over five thousand communities across the country. And a bit about how Flock operates, uh, we operate as a subscription model. And we did this very intentionally. We wanted our product and services to be a light lift for cities and counties. With regard to implementation, we didn't want to tax additional city resources. So we provide infrastructure-free devices, permitting assistance, lifetime hardware and software enhancements, as well as data storage. All of that is included in the contract price. Now shifting over to the license plate readers themselves. So what the license plate readers do is provide real-time investigative leads to officers to expedite case clearance and really improve operational efficiency on roadways, even when a license plate isn't visible. So the license plate reader cameras operate from fixed locations. They are mounted either on an existing pole, like a utility pole, or on what we call a flock pole. They're about twelve to fourteen feet in the air. They're solar powered. So when you see these in the community, you'll see uh the camera with a solar panel mounted above the camera. This image here is actually a really great representation of what the cameras are capturing. It's an image focused on the rear of a vehicle and they're taken from public roadways. It's important to note that these can't continuously track a vehicle. Rather, they provide a point-in-time image. The cameras operate twenty-four hours a day, seventies a week, and in inclement weather. For our law enforcement customers, we are integrated with real-time alerts from the National Crime Information Center. So when um an agency enters, say, a suspect or a stolen vehicle that's been reported into that database. If that vehicle passes by a camera in a community, officers will be alerted to that wanted vehicle within seconds. That also applies to, we have a wonderful relationship with the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children. So if there is a vehicle associated with an active Amber Alert, if that vehicle passes by a camera in the community, your officers will be alerted to that vehicle. So the system is proactive in that it alerts officers to wanted vehicles. It also provides thirty days default of data retention, so thirty days of historical information. So investigators can access objective evidence based on vehicle details and gather case leads in order to clear more crimes. Flock cameras, we've heard, can also serve as a tur, a deterrent. And we hear that word spreads that there are cameras in your community and cases are cleared, our crime is prevented. It makes it a lot riskier for folks intent on committing crime in your community to do so. And we are ethically built. I will get into more details about how we support privacy. Um, but there is no facial recognition software utilized. This is not a red light camera. This is not used for speed tracking. It's really providing indiscriminate evidence from those fixed locations. So as mentioned, privacy is important. And number one, all of the data that would be collected by the cameras in your community would be owned by your city. Flock will never sell your information to a third party. I had mentioned previously, there is a uh default data retention schedule of thirty days. And what that means is any image uh is given a time to live, if you will. And at that thirty-day mark, if it has not been downloaded as part of a criminal, as evidence in a criminal investigation, that image is hard deleted and unrecoverable. So it's really balancing, you're not stockpiling images unnecessarily over the long term. Next is that no individual personal data is collected or accessible in the Flock LPR system. There are no names, addresses, et cetera. It's only focused on those vehicle details. And while there is no personal information within the Flock LPR system, security is very important. And all of the data is stored with end-to-end encryption. We also believe in enabling accountability and transparency. And so any query that officers um conduct within the Flock LPR system requires a search reason and is tied to a user number, and that is saved indefinitely, which provides Chief and his administration the ability to audit and ensure that the system is being used in accordance to department policy and of course laws. Flock also reduces bias in crime solving by enhancing that objectivity. Again, this is really focused on vehicle details and not people. We also offer a free and optional transparency portal. And what that is, it's a public-facing webpage that Flock generates for our LPR customers. And it gives your community an idea of how the system is being utilized by the department. This is an example from an agency in in another state. They give an overview of what the system is for, what is detected, what is not, what are prohibited uses of the system, what are acceptable uses, some information about data retention, the number of cameras in their community. And they've also elected to share a listing of all of the law, other law enforcement agencies that this agency in particular has elected to share their information with. In addition to this public-facing webpage, uh, Chief and the administrators of the Flock system will have access to an internal, what we call an insights dashboard. And what that does is it provides Chief the ability to see if officers are utilizing the system, what outcomes and impacts uh the cameras have helped in with the having in community safety so that you all can make decisions into the future as far as return on investment. You know, are these cameras really having the impact that we set out for? And that's also where the audit search history lives. And to finish up, we are working with over ten law enforcement agencies within the state of Oregon, including some of your um nearby uh cities listed there. And then I just wanted to share some examples of stories that have been shared with us from law enforcement agencies across the country on how they're using their Flock LPR system to help impact crime in their community. This was shared with us by Concord Police Department. They um, their license plate readers helped them um arrest suspects that were involved in organized retail theft. And the the PD provided this, this quote, um organized retail theft is a problem which results in the loss of hundreds of thousands of dollars each year from local businesses. And this is one case example of technology assisting in the apprehension of criminals. Um, so being able to impact that certainly has um a positive impact for local businesses. This is an example shared with us by the Spokane County Sheriff's Office um out in Washington. This is an example of how license plate readers helped authorities identify a suspect that uh make an arrest of a suspect um who assaulted a female victim on a local hiking trail. So after the assault occurred, the female victim told authorities that the suspect attacked her and then fled in his vehicle. They were able to look in the Flock LPR system um and identify that suspect vehicle. They went to their separate law enforcement uh databases and were able to make the connection to a registered owner and locate that suspect the next day. And then that person was charged with second-degree assault. So bringing closure um to victims and uh LPR having a really great impact on community safety there. This is an example, uh, Tuckwell utilized LPR. They actually were able to, they were alerted to three separate um stolen vehicles, all within kind of the same parking lot or area. And one of the arrests um ended up um resulting in multiple charges in addition to arrest of theft for a, of a stolen car, including possession of controlled substances. And then to finish up, um, LPR has been really integral in helping law enforcement agencies solve a variety of different crimes. But also, we've seen a wonderful impact in the ability to provide critical information when folks are missing, um, missing vulnerable adults as well as um, missing children. And so these were a couple of uh instances. This was from Clemeth Falls, Oregon, um, who collaborated with a uh out-of-state agency. A Texas woman had been reporting missing. And they were able to utilize vehicle information and were alerted to that vehicle's whereabouts um because of LPRs in the community. And then lastly, this is about a, a missing senior who was located within about fifteen minutes with the use of LPR. So um, that concludes my presentation. It was a lot of information. I'll pass it back to Chief. If I've missed anything, um, otherwise, I'm also happy to help answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Kristin. Um, so how this falls under the Oregon Organized Retail Crime Task Forces, they are the ones that are offering the grant. Um, several agencies in the valley, uh, Talent, Medford, Jackson County. I know it said White City up there, but it's Jackson County Sheriff's Office and Eagle Point. Um, all at one point had received this grant and have installed um said Flock cameras. So basically, we're the, we're the hole in the valley right now. Um, we don't have um any cameras. Um, and just last week, Lieutenant Price was able to uh recover a stolen vehicle out of Phoenix, Arizona that was caught on the Flock camera on North Phoenix Road, headed southbound. And he just thought for a minute, maybe they went to Petro. So he drove over to Petro and there they were. And so he was able to recover that vehicle. Um, it's a great system. And so uh, we are planning on applying for this grant. And basically, that would give us two years of uh the service. And then um, this grant has been offered every two years, so we would reapply and hopefully get the grant again. Uh, should we not get the grant sometime in the future, then the city would be on the hook for the uh program if we were to continue it. At which time, we would have a serious discussion about, okay, do we need this many cameras? Can we lower that cost or, you know, exactly what is the the, you know, where are, where are we at at that time? So.
What is the cost uh per year? I mean?
Um, so the current one that we're looking at is uh ninety-three thousand for two years. So it's uh fifty-one thousand the first year and then forty-two thousand the second year. And the forty-two thousand would be the continuation. Um, should we uh continue with all the cameras? And also, we are looking at uh in that price, um, putting in cameras as we discussed previously, um, near uh Maine and uh North Phoenix Road, a stationary uh camera that is basically. These cameras are not security cameras, um, but the the camera that we had talked about is another product of Flock that uh we have added into um that.
How many Flock cameras would you need in Phoenix to do the job?
I, I need to sit down with Lieutenant Price again. He was kind of the one that sat down with, with their technicians. And I think they came up with eight. I don't know that we need eight, but that's, that's what they came up with. Um.
Okay.
Medford has over twenty and they're looking at getting some more, uh, Jackson County the same. So.
Would they be mainly on the like main road thoroughfares or are you gonna?
Yes, so basically uh, South Park, um, both on the north side, the south side. Um, over in the uh, somewhere on North Phoenix Road, um, possibly in the triangle area, um, monitoring the traffic going towards the freeway and coming from the freeway and then over by Home Depot. Um, Home Depot is really the major one. Uh, they are the ones that are getting hit with the uh retail crime theft. And so um, we're really trying to partner with them and.
Do you know if the cameras are um in permanent locations or can they be moved around like your little speed thing?
They have those, they do have the ones that are on trailers that you can move around. They aren't, I don't believe they're the LPR ones that can do that. Those are just the security ones. And uh, I was talking to Medford Chief last week or two weeks ago and he doesn't like that one. He's, he felt it was.
We could like move them to problem areas and then, you know, problem goes away, move it to another problem area or something?
Well, that, that's not really what the Flock cameras are for there, cause they're not, they're not.
They're not.
They're not security cameras.
Okay.
So, yeah, they're just, they're, they're taking pictures of vehicles.
More for traffic, big stuff. Okay.
Uh, Chief, the, the fifty thousand cost, is that um, is that for monitoring? Is it for the lease of the cameras?
That's for the program, everything.
Every year, okay.
Yeah. Well, it's forty thousand, fifty-one, five hundred the first year. And then forty-two thousand annually recurring after that.
And they do all the install and the upkeep and repairs and all of that?
Yes.
Um, the, that says no facial recognition, eh?
Correct.
No, no software tracking that. Would it be as um, traffic photos that include someone's face? In them or would the face not be included?
No, they are, they are facing, basically, they're, they're trying to, because a lot of people, even though it's illegal, don't put front license plates on their vehicles. So they're, they're trying to catch the license plate on the rear of a vehicle after it has already passed uh the camera. So.
I love that it can track uh missing children. I think that is fantastic.
Yeah, and that, and basically that, if, if a law enforcement agency hasn't put a car into the system, Flock's not gonna.
Oh, pick it up?
Pick it up. You know, you could have, you could have a bank robbery suspect driving a car. But if nobody has put that vehicle uh in the system, Flock's not gonna say, yeah, there was the cause lock doesn't know. So it only knows what, what is put in there. So.
Is it possible for people to put in some type of a translucent barrier that Flock can't read the, the plate? I'm just.
I, I assume so because, you know, they, you see those.
About such things.
Yeah, they, you know, a lot on the places where there's tolls and people fly through the tolls and then they have the, the cover on their license plate that. Um, so I don't, you know, so I'm sure it's possible. However, a good law enforcement officer who sees that would stop the vehicle and write them a ticket before it ever got to that point anyway. So.
Okay. Any other questions, comments on it?
I, I just, yeah, quick, two points. I think when Chief asked about applying for this grant, I wanted to make sure the council heard this because as there was a lot of discussion around, you know, personal identity and and those kinds of things. But um, so, you know, obviously, those are, eh, eh, like anything. But um, so you know, obviously, those are, eh, eh, like anything, you know, there's pros and cons. But I think the one thing that I would emphasize is the, the fact that it will save resources, human. If the, using technology will make us more effective. And it won't, it won't be, you know, it won't be as, as mentioned in the uh. Mentioned in the presentation that this is, you know, something that we can, we can get better at, but then, you know, our resources are. Better investment, I guess. And we're used to doing some, a lot of this stuff because it has to go to court. And you know, our body cameras are the same kind of, we, we bought into a system that allows us to. Monitor that and provide that, that information for a future, you know, date or court date.
Right, okay. Yeah, I mean, I understand the current system is the officer has to type in the number. There's no other way, you know. And it's very time consuming and this is automatic. Yep. Okay, no other further questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you, chief.
Okay, uh, we're going on to uh D, three D financial reports quarterly schedule and AI presentation. Alana come up. Yeah, I read this. It's very interesting because I had a question of a city manager, you know, I read about AI. I said, hey, how are we uh, how are we doing on the AI business? And so it was fascinating reading this report of uh how AI is helping us. And this is in a, a positive way and is, is cost saving too, right?
Right.
So Alana, take it away.
So I'm happy to provide an update on our year end financial report. Um, but I'm gonna start off with um some of the other items before I get into the financial report in the weeds of all of that. Um, so for the quarterly financial report schedule, um, we are gonna be doing this the second. At the end of the quarter, so the first quarter is July through September. So um, the next report will be second meeting of October. And so it'll always be the preceding month after um the quarter ends. Um, and it'll be the second meeting and that just is to give us enough time to do our financial um close at the end of the month. Um, so for the quarterly year end report, um. Just wanted to mention that'll usually come um around this time because it takes us. About three months to get all of our invoices in, all of our expenditures for utilities and post, and then do all of our journals. So it's always gonna be a little bit pushed back um to give a report um for the end of the year. Right in July or August, will probably not. It'll usually be in September, so um. It's, it's gonna be usually quarterly, but year end will always be pushed back a little bit. So just wanted to give some insight on the scheduling of the financial report. Um, and then wanted to get into um just an audit update for you all, because we've been working on the audit. Um, I know council members that were here in twenty-one, twenty-two have been interviewed. It is still ongoing. Um, and we do anticipate um completion in November twenty-twenty-five. So this is taking quite a bit longer than we initially thought it would. Um, part of that is that uh those that worked on the twenty-twenty-one auditor no longer here. And our auditors, um KDP have a new financial software and they don't have our twenty-twenty-one numbers. So a lot of times it's trying to figure out the puzzle of what happened last year that's affecting this year. Um, so we've been going through the audit and just trying to put those puzzle pieces together for our twenty-one, twenty-two numbers. Um, but we do still anticipate uh being able to start and finish twenty-two, twenty-three in this um fiscal year as well. Um, so for this uh fiscal year, we'll be conducting two audits. Um, most likely, and then the next two audits will be in the next fiscal year to catch up. Um, so just wanted to give the council an update on that.
It, it says um that twenty-two, twenty-three would be done winter of twenty-twenty-six. Is that accurate? Are you saying this one is, is going to be?
Correct. So twenty-one, twenty-two is the one that we've been working on.
Okay.
Um, and twenty-two, twenty-three should go by a little bit quicker because we'll know the beginning number since we worked on twenty-one, twenty-two. So it won't be as much of a mystery. Um, and so uh we are anticipating being able to complete twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, this fiscal year, so.
Oh, okay.
So we'll still, we're gonna conduct two audits and then we'll do twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-four, twenty-five in the next fiscal year, so.
Okay.
Um, if that makes sense, we'll have two audits per year until we catch up.
Can you, can you remind me, um, when KDP took on the twenty-one, twenty-two audit? Do you remember which month that was? They started working on that?
When they started working?
Yeah, I just.
Believe it's been quite a bit of time because it was before I started. But, and I started in February um of twenty-twenty-five. And so um prior to me beginning, they had some information collected. Um, but what ends up happening is if they're stagnant or they're not getting the information they need, they move on to other audits, which is what they did. So it's pretty much like they started in February of twenty-twenty-five. And then they wanted me to relook at everything and re-upload everything. So all of the uploads that were um submitted to the auditors and information gathered prior to me starting is not there anymore. So I had to pretty much restart everything.
Oh, man.
Yeah.
So um, so November twenty-five. Or October twenty-five is when we're looking at, so that they will use this last, last month or two to finish. They're close to being done with the audit. And Phoenix has given them everything we need to, for them to finish.
So we're still, there's, every time we submit, there's new questions. So um they're back on our audit this week, so we're hoping to wrap up. Um, so as I mentioned, they have other audits that they go to and then they come back to us. And so we're back on again and we're hoping um to be done with our portion in October and then have. Uh, them complete their portion in November and have it.
Okay, so they'll be taking on other municipalities in between twenty-twenty, now in twenty-twenty-six?
Correct.
Okay.
A question, what is uh ERP? I missed that acronym somewhere.
Um, and it's gonna, I use it on a daily basis, so I'm sorry, but it's.
That's okay.
It's a, it, what it basically means is it's a financial uh tool that encompasses all of your um accounting features. Which could be purchasing, um accounts receivable, your budget, um, so it's a resource.
That's okay, don't worry about, don't worry about. You've explained it, that's fine.
But it's, it's basically a whole suite, so.
Okay.
Um, currently we're using Tyler in code nine. Um, and that is a little bit limiting, so um as I mentioned, it's an older software. And we had three months to close, so I'm happy to report we have closed um the year end. Um, and so it's a hard close at uh September thirtieth is how the financial software works. Uh, once we have um in code ten, we'll have more capability and efficiencies and not have such an antiquated system. That's pretty much what ends up happening is if you don't make any, you know, if you have corrections or adjustments, you can't make them after September thirtieth unless it's in a shadow system. So it's just kinda clunky.
Your job, rough.
Yeah.
Um, can you tell me how much uh with a, with a city municipality that is having its audit? How much time does an audit company usually need to complete that year audit uh without all the problems that we've had? Do, do you know?
Yeah, I, well, I've been through a few audits in my career and generally um it's gonna take. And some auditors are different. They'll break it up into an interim audit and a final audit. Um, when I was with the school district, we had two audits and so it was kind of like the whole year. Um, we would do the interim and then um our final audit. But generally, it takes about, I would say, a month. Um, and so this is quite a bit of time.
It's, it's very long, yeah.
Yes, yeah. So most of that is just researching kind of what happened because we're so far behind. Um, just knowing what's what is not easy and the ledger's not very um transparent. So it's going through the actual physical records and trying to find data.
I know that that is a mess that, that you had to fix not. I know that you did not create that, so thank you for working on it.
It's been fun. The finance team feel like investigators, um, and it's, it's actually, I mean, it makes the day go by really quickly. But it's, it's been a lot to kind of go through all of it, so um. We're looking forward to being done with twenty-one, twenty-two and then the next year's audits being a little bit easier for us. Um, so that should be coming up soon. Um, as far as AI and technology update, um, so I was asked to gather information from each department on AI. And also just, there's been a slew of technology updates that we've implemented um recently, but I'll start with AI. Um, so most recently, um, we did prepare some event flyers and didn't realize that we could use AI for that. And that just reduced staff time tremendously and it, it was just neat to see how it put everything together. Um, so there's some capabilities, you know, we didn't really know about and we're just finding out as we go along. But it's, it's been really helpful. Um, Public Works is currently using AI for the SCADA system. Which is a supervisory control and data acquisition. Um, and this is to monitor our pump stations, um, as well as um the. Um, experiment pump station and skyline pump station. Um, and so we're able to control pumps and valves remotely, um, while also monitoring the water reservoir levels. In the future, um, we are looking at, I believe this fiscal year, um, to start um transitioning into the AMI system. And that was budgeted uh for this year. And um that will actually give us the ability to see water leaks, um, which would be very helpful. Um, I myself had a water leak before and it's, you know. If, if we're able to detect it early, that could be very helpful when people are transitioning also into new um homes. And there may be a water leak that they don't know about. Um, it's just, it'll, it'll help um our citizens. And also we'll be able to um pull monthly meter reads each month, so that'll help with um staff efficiencies as well. Um, for community development, um, AI is being used to verify compliance of our zoning code with state laws. New state laws as well as with new FEMA regulations as they pertain um to habitat assessments. Um, and so that's Zach Moody's area, um, and he's been um really helpful. And just giving me this information too, to start looking at our um, our own codes too. So I've, usually Zach is pretty good about pulling all of the information and data using AI. So I'm catching up, um, so help uh from Zach has been uh really good in looking at our own ordinances. Um, and um codes as well for um budgeting, so there'll be a few that we're looking at. Um, which hopefully I'll be able to um start using AI just to help gather data as well. Um, and then lastly, we have cameras that are installed um at City Hall and Blue Heron Park. And AI is used to search those video recordings. Um, so we're using AI, um, sometimes not directly, but it's, it's also. Um, helping us in various ways that um are indirect. And for finance, um, as far as the technology updates, we recently moved uh from a physical server to the cloud. And so this is gonna provide us additional um security um and reliability. We also will have the ability to access our financial software remotely. Um, so we're still kind of transitioning all of that. Um, currently, all departments um and users can uh access through the cloud. Um, but I think we also need a training just to be able to um utilize it to the best ability. So um in October, we're gonna also have a training um from Tyler, um, so that'll be coming up. We are also working on implementing new modules um for purchase orders. So currently the city does not utilize purchase orders, um, which is. Pretty tough, um, when you're trying to um project expenses. And also this will just give us an additional approval um electronically. So we're able to kind of track things a little bit better. Um, we'll also be able to approve um checks electronically so that the mayor will no longer have to physically sign each one. Um, so that is coming as well, um, and hopefully within the next few months. Um, so I'll keep up you up to date as we move in that direction. And then lastly, we're transitioning our email from Cario to Microsoft three sixty-five Outlook. Um, this was per the recommendation of tech management who we're now contracting with. Um, and from what we understand with Cario, it's been a little bit clunky when we're trying to access remotely. And trying to, it, it's just been a weird transition now that we have tech management. So with Microsoft three sixty-five, um, we're looking forward to being able to recover our emails a little bit easier. And it, there'll just be a few more efficiencies that'll be um helpful to the city. And also to tech management who's now managing our technology, so um, any questions?
Yeah, Alana, um, when you mentioned Cario, is that gonna change our uh email system here for the council? We'll, we'll see now, Microsoft.
So within the next um month, yes, so we'll be reaching out and tech management will be reaching out to each of you as well, so.
User friendly?
Yeah.
Yay.
Yep, change is always coming, yeah. All right, I thought so. All right.
We'll get into the financial report. So attached, um, I've provided a financial report, which is a comparison of the adopted budget to year-to-date actuals. Um, and you have that in your packet, um. But just wanted to mention a few things. Um, I just mentioned we are moving from Tyler version nine um to ten. Um, pretty soon, and then wanted to mention that within the report. Um, the adopted budget does include our most recent changes. We had a supplemental budget that was approved in April of twenty-twenty-five. And then we also had a transfer of appropriation that was most recently approved um through resolution eleven forty. So the numbers in the adopted budget have um changed and do reflect those um two changes. So just wanted to mention that. So this is a different view um than the report that you have. I wanted to give you also a view of um the summary of budget. So you have um in the report, I've broken down the balance per fund. Um, and then this is an overall picture of resources and requirements for all funds. Um, compared to the budget. And so you can see um overall kind of where we landed with all of the funds. Um, for taxes, I do want to mention in this report, it does include not only property taxes. But we also have our marijuana taxes and our liquor taxes and some of those state shared um taxes as well. Um, overall property taxes, as we look at the general fund, um, you'll see that we're pretty on target there. Um, but some of those state taxes did not come in as projected. And then when we're looking at charges for services overall, um, year-to-date, we did bring in um more than budgeted. Uh, licenses and permits, we're a little bit under fines and forfeitures. Those are a little bit hard to predict. Um, we don't really know what the year is gonna entail. Um, so we generally use prior years, um, usually you're looking at the last three years to kind of project that.
So these numbers are just for the three quarters of the year, so this, this doesn't represent the final quarter of twenty.
No, this is, this is your year-to-date actual, so this is everything for the year. Um, so overall resources that the city brought in for the year um is at twenty million, seven hundred and sixty thousand approximately. Um, versus what we had budgeted at the twenty-eight million. Um, the majority of that has to do with that line that you see intergovernmental, um, which also includes grants. And a lot of that is grants for capital projects. And so sometimes there's a delay in a project. We've been awarded the funds, but we haven't started the project. So we haven't spent the funding or received the reimbursement for those expenses.
Okay, in the general fund on, in the packet that you have, you have um earnings on investments up two hundred and, or two hundred and fifty percent of what was budgeted. Um, what does that represent?
So.
That, that is under.
Two hundred and fifty percent more, so we had budgeted. So we had budgeted 120,000, but brought in 300,000. So that is the local government investment pool.
Okay.
And we are going to get into each fund. I did want to just show you an overall picture of resources that were brought in. Generally, when you think of the city, for the general fund, your property taxes are going to be your main resources. When you're looking at the overall city budget, the majority of that is grants because we do spend quite a bit on capital projects. And we did receive awards for capital projects. And so that is a big chunk of our resources this year at 39%. And then our services also at 30%. So our utility billing services represent the majority of that in addition to our community development services. And then moving over to our requirements, which are the expenditures for this year. Majority of that is personnel and then materials and services as well as capital outlay. We've spent almost exactly the same, which is interesting between those two. And then we have our debt services. The city does not have very much debt at 6%. So overall, I think the city, as we move forward, the policy of making sure that the revenue and resources that we bring in fit the budget or fit the expenditures. We're going to maintain that policy so that we don't accrue high debt. So 6% is a good number, pretty low.
Good.
Okay, moving on to the general fund. I know Angie had a few questions on the general fund. So with local government investment pool, it's a yield of, and I should have said 300,000. And that represents accrued interest from the investment pool. And that's the short-term STR fund is what it's called. And so government entities that participate in that state investment pool received overall 5% interest, average interest, accrued interest that was received on the balances that are maintained in the LGIP. And so the city, most of the funding is in LGIP and is not moved unless until we we need the funding. So that's our main source of investment.
Okay. So be budgeted thinking it would be 120,000, but we got 300,000. It was just.
So you the LGIP is around, historically, has been around 2%, sometimes 1%. But most recently, even last year, it started to go up and it's been increasing. And now we're seeing it finally going back down to 4%. But some months got up to 5.6%, which is pretty high.
And that brought that yield in. That's great.
And then, let's see. So overall, for the general fund, we see that resources were at 86% of what was budgeted. And some exceptions to that are why we didn't come in at 100%. Most of that was the beginning fund balance. So I think as this budget was put together in 2425, I don't know that we had 2122 completed as far as the audit goes. And so as the audits go, sometimes things shift. Sometimes, you know, your beginning fund balance changes. So in just looking at the records, that's what it looks like. So it's quite a bit lower, just 70% of what we budgeted. In addition to that, we have our intergovernmental funds that were budgeted, which included the fire district payment as well. And we know that's being postponed.
Yes, yeah.
Let's see, for requirements, kind of same thing. We didn't receive that payment from the fire district or we didn't have the debt payment expense as well, since that was postponed. Overall, ending fund balance for the general fund is pretty much on target. We're at 1.3 million. And the adopted budget beginning fund balance is at 1.4. We do anticipate receiving OEM FEMA funding as well. This is for Blue Heron Park Playground, which was a while back. 2122 and 2223. And we're just getting the reimbursement now. And so that'll affect the beginning fund balance once we get those funds in because we do have some staff reimbursements that were included in that.
That that number, I think it's right at 500,000.
Yes, and 169 I just entered because that's the number that we have for sure that's in transit. We also have a fire crew project, which is the generator as well. And that's quite a bit of funding. So overall, yeah, it'll be around 500,000. Some of that will go to the general fund. Some of it will go to our water fund and capital projects as well.
Okay.
Okay. Ready to move on? Here we go, street fund.
Yep. So we're moving on to street fund. Overall, the street fund is pretty healthy. Resources generally have come in higher than the budget. And I think part of that is, and Zach could probably speak to this a little bit better than I can. But from what I understand, when we are budgeting, the way that we charge the street funds has changed a little bit. And so I think it's, and I'm still trying to wrap my head around it as well. But we recently, after the fire, had to relook at all of the properties and and what those highway taxes were going to be. And so it's it's a little bit different than we originally budgeted. And overall, more revenue was brought in than we anticipated. In addition, for spending, generally the street, it's almost because they share personnel between for public works. Sometimes the allocation is a little bit less and they're working on it less than they anticipate. So, yeah, because public works personnel are shared, it comes in a little bit lower sometimes. So any questions about street?
Alana, I just I'm just concerned about time tonight. You're going to go through all of the funds, right?
And. Yes, and we're almost done.
All right, very good. Just because I look at, you know, the council and I have to keep them awake, okay?
Yeah, we can. So for the water fund, just wanted to look at that. Overall, water fund is pretty much on target with the budget for the year, except for the revenues included the Charlotte Anne Water District grant. And that is actually going to project by five or to fund 556. So that was about $4 million. And so that's why you're seeing the variance there. So just wanted to make sure you've seen that. Debt service fund. So part of the debt service fund, the beginning fund balance includes a debt payment that was not made by Fiera. And we've discussed this a few times. And so now we've done some more research and the number that we're finding is 194,231 for 2122 instead of the 243,000. So a little bit less that Fiera will have to pay. And so just wanted to mention that. And this will be cleared out in this next year because we did budget that payment in 2526 in this current year. Special revenue funds, there's not much to mention other than with the tourist usage fund, the TLT fund. We were able to recover more revenue than we have, you know, in the past because we did contact Airbnb and they have been complying and paying those taxes. So that was really helpful to get in touch. And then in the future, we're also looking at possibly having the state collect on behalf of the city. That is a service that they offer at a very reasonable cost. And they're very good at making sure that, from what we've heard from other cities, making sure that those that are not paying on time or are delinquent, that they do because it's kind of wrapped into the state as well. So that's something that we're looking into and hope to present to council more information soon.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
That's it?
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you very much for that. Yeah. All right. Good. All right. Let's see here. Where are we? We are now coming up on public comments. And I have one, two, three, four, five people tonight, which is really great. So the first person is Willow MacLeod. Willow?
I think it's first.
All right. And I keep time, Willow, and you have, each person has three minutes. Okay? So.
So I am going to make this very short. I'm at 102 South Church Street here in Phoenix. And I'm here representing neighbors. I've got a lot of my neighbors here. We have had a horrible landlord living next to us for five years now. And it's about to get worse as he's been approved to build 10 more units in our backyard. And it has become really apparent that there's really no rules for us to protect us as homeowners. And so this is going to be brought up. This is just our first stage to bring awareness to you guys that this is happening to us. This is going to affect our longtime plan of being here in Phoenix. And it's very concerning. He has been a nightmare to live next to. And he's also building the units down here. So you guys are going to have a nightmare situation on your hands here soon too. So I just wanted to bring awareness to it before we start digging into all the legalities of every single thing and pinpointing it and getting a letter to you guys, which will be coming. We're all really busy and we work. There's just, you know, a couple of things. I'm probably at one minute left now. So do you guys know, and answer me after this, is there any law in the city of Phoenix that helps as far as how many times code enforcement and police officers are called to a to a building? It doesn't seem like there's any accountability. They get called over and over and over again and nothing ever changes. And you're enabling him to build more units with more problems because he often just lets drifters live there. So I'm also wondering if he has, if you guys can look into see if he's paid any of your motel tax because he does, not necessarily Airbnb, but he does vacation rentals all the time. So I don't believe he would report this because he doesn't report a lot of things. So I'd like you to look into this for us and see if there's anything else that's super important. Let's see. I'd also like you guys to maybe personally go over and look at the driveway. It is a complete fire hazard and the place needs to be condemned. Eventually, there's going to be a fire. He doesn't do any upkeeps to the place at all. Now there's going to be 10 more units. So if there is a fire, the people that have a 14-foot entrance and exit, one entrance, one exit are going to be behind it, are going to be trapped. So we're looking at a really bad situation. And I'm going to let my neighbors speak now and let you guys go because it is late. But I really appreciate you listening to me. This is just the beginning of us bringing this to your attention. And it's it's keeping us up at night. So thank you.
Willow, can you give us the street address, the number?
It's sorry, it's 211 West First Street. And the landlord's name is Josh Swansing.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. We'll go on to the next person, and that is Rosa Hernandez. Please. Okay. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Oh, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Rosa Hernandez. Y vivo aquí en el 108 South Church Street for 24 years. And I never had a problem with nobody, with my neighbors. And I think two months ago, I heard about somebody striving to build something right behind my backyard, disturbing my privacy. Because privacy is like, is the peace, is my rights. So his rights and when my rights start. So and since I knew that, I start to feel worse my my diabetes. So I don't know what more, que va pasar, I don't know, with this with this project. But I don't think so. It's a good project. Because it's a small, small land for the project he wants to build. I think everybody is for money, is what I think. So and I'm not feeling good about that because I need privacy. My backyard is right there. My kitchen is right there. When I wash my dishes, it's right there. My stove is right there. And my bed, I have two restrooms. My windows are right there. And one of my, my. Como se dice? The dormitorios, los cuartos? My bedrooms is right there. So what are we going to do? Everybody has cell phones right now and there is a lot of crime everywhere. So what what? Or what can we do about that? How you can help us? Because I don't think so. It's a good idea. Because this is not a city, it's a town. It's not New York and Los Angeles or Chicago to build big, big, big buildings. It's a small town. That's what I think. I don't know. It's all I have. I have a lot of things to say, but there is no time. But there is no time. Only for me to speak. There is more people trying to speak. Sorry about that. My English is not really good.
You did good.
But I'm trying to speak. I'm here for 43 years, living in USA.
All right. Thank you very much.
Gracias.
Thank you.
All right, the, let me get my glasses on here. Second? Yes, that's correct.
If it's zoned that way, we can't really stop.
Okay, Armando Lizma. Armando! Underleg, 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 underleg.
I'm going to Junior, isn't it?
You're Junior. Okay. You want to do the same? You want six minutes?
Sure.
Okay, because there's two of you there. All right. All right. You you get six months and you both share. Okay, go ahead.
Hello, everybody. Yeah, I got a question, you know, for the, I live in 108 South Church. I got a question for those apartments, she's want to build in the behind the property. You know, it's not good for us, you know? I live for long time and the property, you know? And it's not good. That's what I want to see. You guys want to help something, you know, or stop those a project? Well, you know, it's not good for us.
You helped.
I'm Armando Junior. I'm here on behalf of my dad and my mom. You know, to be honest with you, I think they're just scared. They've they've lived in this house for 24 years. The people in front of them, same, they haven't left the same. The whole neighborhood has been together for a long time. And yes, I do believe there's been trouble in the back. I feel like they're cramming people into a tight spot. You know, we're not, we're not New York. You don't put rats on top of each other. And I feel like they're trying to stuff. And unfortunately, it's a cash grab. I know there's rules and zoning and regulations, so I'm sure they have their loopholes. You know, they don't need parking spaces if they're so far from a bus stop. But where are they going to park? They have the right to park in the street. I don't know if you guys have ever walked down that road on trash day. It's terrible. They have that whole row. They all take their. They all take their trash out. If you walk by, it smells horrendous. Now you're going to double the amount of trash. A lot of those trash cans are often overfilled, so you have trash on the ground. It looks terrible for us. It looks terrible for Phoenix. My parents are scared because their property is lower than the next. So it's already five feet lower than the, where they're planning on building. So their, their, their backyard starts here and they're going to build three stories. This is what the rumor is. I feel like privacy is a human right. My parents shouldn't have to worry about hanging out. You don't know who's going to rent. Demographics show it's always low income people renting and that's low income breeds crime. So we don't know, right? I'm not saying everyone's a criminal, but I am saying there's going to be my parents are going to have to watch what they put in their own backyard because somebody might see a TV back there and think it's a good idea. My parents live alone. They're not big. They're not strong. They're quiet. They like to be in the backyard. Their privacy is gone. My mom is right. Their kitchen, both rooms. They all face that side. So they're going to have to be careful what they're doing in their house. What, if they're, they can't have money showing anywhere because unfortunately we don't know who's watching. Do they have to worry about a peep and tom, a criminal, somebody just looking into their house? They're going to have to put shutters up. It's, it's, it's terrible. Also, the, the other thing that he's worried about is uh, obstruction of natural sunlight. My dad plants every single year. He has his plants, his flowers. Three-story building is going to block it all. It's going to be pitch black by five o'clock. That's that's not right, in my opinion. It's, it's not right to just decide we're going to build it and you get to shade. Enjoy it. That's a big issue. Also, my parents have been there for twenty-four years. If they ever decide to sell it, they're going to lose value in their property. No one's going to want to buy a house for all the money if the people behind them are an issue. If the people behind them are loud and noisy, we don't know. We don't know if they're planning on putting balconies. We don't know if they're going to be people out there smoking, hanging out. It's, it's just terrible to have to worry about privacy. Especially when you're semi-retired, getting ready to just go into your peaceful era, right? Everybody deserves privacy. You've got to think about it for yourself. If somebody moved into your backyard and was constantly, they had a vision of what you were doing in your kitchen, what you were cooking for dinner. What you are wearing is looking into your bathroom. I'm sure there's those windows that block, but you're, they still see you in there. It's it's like living like someone's always watching you. You shouldn't have to worry about what you're doing. Now, I know that there's rules and I'm sure this guy's got the best lawyers and he probably knows loopholes on how to get around certain things. So I'm sure there's no stopping it, but I'm sure that there's something we can do to maybe compromise. So everyone wins. Because right now it feels like no one's winning. But the guy in his pocketbook, and I get it. You know, this is a free market. Remember your citizens. I think we have to remember that because my parents aren't rich. They grew up poor. This is all they have and they worked very hard to pay their house off. And now this is like where they, it all pays off, but all of a sudden, there's another issue. Now, I'm not saying, you know, stop it, but there's got to be something we can do. Maybe don't make it a three-story. Like I said, it's gonna, it's
One is good, you know?
It's, it's going to dwarf all those houses, that whole neighborhood, and, and Phoenix in general, up until recently, has been small buildings. All of a sudden, we have these big old apartment complexes going and I don't even know if we have the infrastructure and resources to support this many people moving in this fast. I just feel like the building isn't going to be fit with the rest of the infrastructure. The houses are all small. It's going to dwarf. It's going to make their house seem inferior. And it's going to put them in a place where they, they don't know if this is, if Phoenix is going to be for them anymore. And like I said, they, I grew up in Phoenix. I live in Phoenix now on the Barnum subdivision. I moved back into Phoenix because I love it. It's quiet. I'm nervous that we're losing the points that made this place amazing. For the sake of income for certain people who, the guy doesn't even live in Phoenix. He's just, he's just finding good spots. Hey, I'm going to make money over here, but I'm going to live over here. Because he probably sees the same thing. I just my parents feel helpless that they wanted me to come, you know, speak for them because they don't know much. They don't know the rules. They don't know what they can do. But I do hope that, you know, you guys understand that this is affecting a lot of people, more people that are willing to come forward because a lot of people are shy and scared. So I won't, I won't, you know, go on a rant, but I do feel like there should be something that can be done to, to where everyone's happy, to where it doesn't make it a mess because traffic's going to be bad. It's true. There's one entry, one exit. And I'm telling you, on trash day, the night before, go out, you're going to see the nastiest line of trash cans with things on the ground because they have too much. It's, it's terrible and
Okay.
That's kind of all I got.
All right. Well, that's, I think you've covered it. Thank you. I'm in contact with Willow. Okay, on it. You, so you want to say?
Why do you build that property right there by your parents? Do they own the property here? Is that, is that my understanding?
My understanding is he also owns the building being built where the old seven eleven was.
Correct.
And if you if you drive by, you can't even see the hospital, the animal hospital anymore. It's, it's dwarfing it. It doesn't match our, the geometry of the buildings next to it. It looks janky. I don't think it looks good. But in my opinion, I guess it's a free market, so make as much money as you can and take as much money from the people as his way. But yes, he does own more and I know he's I'm sure he's got more money than we all in this room put together, so.
All right, thank you. I appreciate it, gentlemen, both of you. And Erica?
Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Good, good evening.
Hi.
Councillors and Mayor. My name is Erica Ledesma. I was also born in Ashland, raised in talent in Phoenix. Um, I come from a social justice perspective because I've also done affordable housing. So I know that housing is such a need right now in these times. Um, I lead an organization, so we rebuilt Talent Mobile Estates. Um, and we work in Affordable Housing Project in Medford. And so I know that right now, you know, we are trying to build more housing for community. Um, but I think something that I think in this situation, you know, because I do hear my parents and also the neighbors, is like, how can there be an agreement between the owner and the, the residents as well, right? The homeowners, like, is there a way? Because I know when we were starting to build the Affordable Housing Complex in Medford, there was also hesitation from the neighbors who also own homes. And we went there and door to door and talked to them about what was going to be built there. You know, we told them like, you have access to this community center, you know, and it kind of helped like the residents feel like, okay, you know, they're coming and talking to me about this project. So I'm wondering if there's a process to bring like the owner, the developer to the table to meet with the residents and find a way that it's not a two-story or three-story. It can be a single story, like, you know, so that way it still gives that privacy to the residents, right? Um, there. So I think for me, I'm coming to like, how can there be an agreement between all parties? Um, because I would really hate for yeah, for, for the back neighbors to, for their privacy, but also you know, they've been living there for so long. And I think yeah, I also, it's been a week since the Almeida fire, right? And the evacuation was really bad for our community. And so I've been doing fire relief work for five years and I've seen these cramped spaces, like the parking evacuating is such a big issue. So we also have to take that in consideration, right? You as city leaders, like what type of um, environment and housing you want to build for the safety and well-being of all the community, you know, not just some. So for me, I'm just you know, in support of trying to figure out a solution for everyone. Um, that feels good. And so I'm around, I can also support in a process and there's Resolve as well, a nonprofit organization that can be brought into for a restorative process too. So that's everything. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, and we have one other person on public comment tonight, Julia McFadden. It's on oh, oh, you want to do the block party ordinance? Okay, sorry. We'll, we'll wait on you and we'll get you later. Very good. All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. We have uh, city council minutes uh, for August eighteenth, September twenty-second. And uh, unless someone wants to pull something for the, those uh, minutes, uh, I'm open to a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Have a second.
I second it.
Hey, roll.
I'm sorry, who is first? Was it Vermillion?
Yes.
Okay, let's see here. Uh, Vermillion?
Yes.
Counselor Dixon?
Yes.
Counselor Cambros?
Yes.
Counselor Chester?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
All right, great. Very good. Let's go on to new business, seven A. I'd like to call up Samantha Smith, who is applying for the planning commission. There she is. Good evening, welcome. So Samantha has submitted her application and uh Samantha, tell us a little bit more about who you are. The council may have some questions and then we will uh, vote on your application. All right?
Good evening, Council. Um, yes, my name's Samantha Smith. I moved to Ashland in early twenty twenty-two. I have been in the valley since uh, two thousand fifteen. I've held, held a number of like roles uh, in business-wise, um, but owning my own small business in Ashland for three and a half years made me really engage with the community more. Before that, I was with um Amy's Kitchen, more of a corporate role, twenty-four seven kind of manufacturing lifestyle. And then inter- interacting with the community and seeing how much business relates to uplifting or bringing the community down, depending on how that um how that trajectory is going. Um, and the influences made me want to get more involved. I started doing that through the Ashland Chamber. And then when I decided to step away from my business, I knew I wanted to stay involved in living in Phoenix. This was the natural progression. I reached out to some folks that I had actually met through the chamber, um, Will, who introduced me to Al. And since then, I got involved with the budget committee earlier this year. And when Al said there was an opening for this position, I said I was interested um, for the exact reasons that we were just talking about. There's a lot of balance in between what our community members need. The residents have been here forever. And then obviously investment to grow to benefit everybody in the community and bring people and resources and taxes in and stuff. So I think that's something that requires a lot of thought and deliberation um, and takes the involvement of our community and people that will listen to others and have, have those discussions and conversations.
Good, pretty good. Okay. Do we have questions from uh, council?
You're going to serve on budget and, and planning. Uh, thank you so much for that.
Yep, she's willing to do it. That's great. Any other questions? All right. I'll take a motion.
I move to approve Samantha Smith uh, to the planning commission.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Counselor Vermillion?
Yes.
Sir Chester?
Yes.
Counselor Cambros?
Yes.
And Counselor Dixon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, congratulations. Thank you for uh, all that volunteer work you're going to do. Appreciate it. All right, let's go on and call up uh, Levanya Kruger. She's here. She said she was a little bit under the weather, but she's here with protection for herself. And you received her application for parks and recs. And it's exciting. We have all these people coming out to volunteer for these positions. And I think it's so wonderful. I just have to note that. Really appreciate it. So Levanya, even though you're a little bit muted there, um tell us a little bit about yourself. And uh, I have uh, seen Levanya in action on the Phoenix Arts and Cultural Council. She's uh, got a lot of ideas, that's for sure. So she was deeply involved with the uh, Friday Night Art Walk that we just had, and I'll talk about later. So Levanya.
Hi, everybody. Um, yes, you might have seen me at the last time the art council came to you. And thank you again for the budget that you've allowed us to have to kind of move forward on our plans. Um, I, yes, been in Ash, I mean, I've been in Phoenix for almost fifteen years now. I bought a house here. Uh, I grew up in Hawaii and Australia, but then was in Ashland for a long time. Um, so now I've found my roots and I'm here and I want to build a good community and I'm really excited to be a part of a, a place that has room for growth and um, openness to hear younger generation with their ideas and um I'm an advocate for outdoor adventure and parks and community and family orientated. I'm a single mom. I have my own business that I run and I'm just excited to kind of help and be a part and make uh, context and share vision. So thank you for considering me.
Okay, any, any questions?
Uh, I've, I seen your application that you said um, you were excited for the community and opportunity. And I thought that really is a good word for what we have in Phoenix. There's a lot of opportunity. Um, for Parks and Rec and I, I appreciate um, you putting your vision to that.
Thank you, thank you. I think it'll be helpful too, to have what's going on with the arts council too, so that somehow we can kind of work together to create this vision.
Yeah, we need that. That's important. Any other questions or comments? No? Okay, I'll take the motion. Go ahead.
I move to approve Levanya, which I've lost your last name. What is your last name?
Kruger.
Kruger, Levanya Kruger to Parks and Rec Committee.
Okay. Roll call.
Counselor Vermillion?
Yes.
Counselor Cambros?
Yes.
Counselor Chester?
Yes.
And Counselor Dixon?
Yes.
Motion passes. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Levanya, for taking on that.
Double service, both of them. Yeah.
We got, we got two tonight, double duty. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
She's zooming, but I was too scared I was going to mess it up.
I seen you there for a bit.
I see that Paul has his hand raised and I
All right, go ahead.
But um, Paul, I'm going to unmute you. I'm not sure if it was for a public comment that we missed.
I'm sorry, I might have missed it. Yeah. Paul?
Hello, good evening. Yes, it was for a public comment.
Go ahead, Paul.
Thank you. And I have comments again on two of the ordinances. Um I sent you correspondence by email as, as a comment. And I've I want to uh reassure you that I appreciate and respect your service and volunteer and professionalism to our community. And sometimes I see that improvement can be made. And so in that spirit, when I want to improve something, I read the instructions. I know that's hard for a guy to do. But the instructions in this case are the municipal code, the city charter and Oregon revised statutes. And I offered some suggestions and some review, some initial review on um, content of minutes to include written submissions that it appears to be required. And that is my public comment for this evening.
All right. Thank you very much, Paul. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll uh, we'll watch for his hand as we get into the uh, public hearings. All right, good. Well, speaking of public hearings, let's go ahead and you know, we, we've uh we are now dividing up uh, these public hearings into separate sections. We had one where everything was combined. We learned that that caused a little bit of confusion. So we're doing first, we're sort of going back. If anybody in the council wondering what's going on, we're going back to doing it uh, separately. So I'm going to do each one separately. And we have three of them. And obviously, we'll be looking for a public comment on these items as well as Julia McFadden or Block Party. So we'll get to that. So let me get organized here. Make sure we do it right. I am uh, this is the first reading of ordinance ten forty-seven and ordinance amending ordinance five, six, four, title ten, section ten point two, four, trucks of the Phoenix Municipal Code, it says here. So uh, I am going to uh, open the public hearing. Now, we've had the applicant come forward uh, in the past. And um that, you have nothing else to add, correct? No, I didn't think so. So the applicant has nothing else to add regarding of this particular ordinance change. So citizens testifying in support of the application, are there any? Okay, are there any citizens testifying neutral or against the application? I don't see any. All right. In that case, uh, we will close the public hearing on eight A. And at this point, I believe we can go ahead and I can take a motion from the council.
We're on the truck phone?
Yes, now we're on, yes, and that is page twenty-five. Thank you very much.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, so I I move to approval on first reading of ordinance ten forty-seventh and ordinance and ordinance amending ordinance five six four, title ten, section ten point two four, Trucks of the Phoenix Municipal Code.
I'd second.
Roll call.
Counselor Chester?
Yes.
Counselor Dixon?
Yes.
Counselor Cambros?
Uh, she stepped away for a moment. Um, and Counselor Vermillion?
Yes.
Do we need active quorum?
Al, you would be the quorum, I believe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Motion passes.
All right, excellent. We will move on to eight B. First reading ordinance ten forty-eight and ordinance amending ordinance seven oh nine and eight seven six, titled eight, section eight point zero four, nuisances of the Phoenix Municipal Code. And uh, Zach, did you have anything to say? You do not. Okay, citizens testifying in support of the application? Do I see any? I don't see any. And then Paul, hey, are you, go ahead. Are you testifying for or against?
I am testifying in support with the comments that I sent to you in writing.
You have any additional comments you want to make at this time?
Yes, um, the mayor has requested that I send my comments uh earlier after the packet is issued on Thursday evening as as soon as I can. And I want to let you know that you don't want my raw comments. I uh I read, I review the packet, I read background material, I research, and I contemplate. And with respect for your time and the public process, I give you what I believe are refined comments and helpful comments. I don't, I don't want to give reactionary comments. And I hope you do find these helpful. The the purpose of my writing at present was to point out collisions between the proposed weed abatement ordinance, which I support, and uh some factual errors in the deliberations at the past discussion that if relied upon could potentially put well-intentioned citizens uh afoul of one regulation or another. What we want is fire safety, and I encourage a standard to be met by a certain date. And once it's extreme fire danger, we can't do anything about it in terms of weed abatement. So thank you for your consideration. I hope you will consider that and amend accordingly. And I support it however you decide is best for us.
Okay, so you're 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 approving that you're not opposed to it, correct?
That is correct.
All right, thank you. I wanted to make sure I understood. All right, Paul. Just wanted to make sure. All right, thank you very much. Are you through? Okay, very good. Uh, is there any citizen opposing this particular ordinance? I don't see any. All right, in that case, on uh, was it page twenty-eight? Take a motion.
I move approval on first reading of ordinance ten forty-eight and ordinance amending ordinance seven zero nine and eight seven six, title eight, section eight point zero four, noxious vegetation of the Phoenix Municipal Code.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All right, roll call.
Counselor Chester?
Yes.
Counselor Vermillion?
Yes.
Counselor Cambros?
Yes.
And Counselor Dixon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, very good. We'll go on to eight C, first reading ordinance ten forty-nine and ordinance amending ordinance nine twenty, adding regulations for block parties to title twelve, section twelve point two nine of the Phoenix Municipal Code. All right, the applicant here, uh, any other comments from the applicant for block parties? But no, no, behind you. Did you want to say anything else? No.
The last word the ordinance should have been.
As Paul noted.
All right, so Paul and Paul noted that, I guess. Yeah, okay, very good. All right, that's a big. All right, uh, do we have citizens testifying in support? You are, please come forward, Julia McFadden. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name's Julia McFadden. I live at five twelve South Rose Street. And um so I want to first of all say thank you so much for pulling this ordinance together. We and there's a group of us who have been putting together a block party, and I just wanted to offer a little bit of the human um experience to this. So after the fires, we left and we realized we were worried about each other, but we didn't know how to reach each other. We didn't know if somebody needed help. Um, and that was the inspiration for us getting this block party together. And I think when we started asking about the process, we have a little street, uh Elm Street, that's between South Rose and Bee. There's four houses on it. We were hoping to be able to close that street so that we could have kids play safely. We don't have sidewalks, so we don't have any other place really to gather other than in somebody's backyard. Um, so we were hoping to do that. And in doing so, we ran into some challenges and found that we really didn't have much of a process. And so thank you so much for creating a permit for it. Um, I did want to present so that because our party is gonna be on October eleventh, I'm not sure this permit process is going to be complete for us to be able to use it thoroughly. And uh, and so we are asking if there is some way that we could be, when you approve the ordinance, if you could make some consideration for the staff to be able to work with us on a a street closure just for that portion. Um, we do meet the requirements that are outlined in the ordinance at this point in time, and we have been following along so that we make sure everything we plan would be in alignment with their proposed language.
All right, maybe that's something that.
Yeah, I think so. You said October.
October eleventh.
Eleven. So I think this first reading, then we'll have the second read. I see no reason if we go through that process to work with you on on communicating that.
Yeah.
Julia, can I, can I ask how big your block party is gonna be? How many, how many neighbors are gonna take part? Do you have any idea?
Don't know. We are thinking that it might be between twenty and forty. Um, yeah. So we've got, uh, we did an initial flyer that we went around with a little QR code and asking for interest and got some input on times. And we we sent out forty of those and we got uh seventeen responses just from the initial inquiry. So then we were gonna circle back around now that we have the date and time. And we hope that the repeat um contact and having a date will help us get a little bit more energy drummed up too, so.
So you have, you have people bringing chairs or tables or food. Everybody's partaking in.
Yeah, yeah, we have a neighbor who actually has catering um equipment. And so they said, we're happy to lend catering equipment. Somebody else said, I can make a brisket. We figure brisket's pretty safe. It's heated. We're trying to make sure we limit, but we're limiting our trash, limiting our and things. So we're hoping we can do, you know, sliders or finger foods. Uh, and then everybody bring their own drink, avoid major allergens, have some cornhole or some activities for the kids of, we don't have sidewalk, but we would love sidewalk chalk. You know, things like that, that we can do something for everybody. Uh, it would be three to six P M, so three hours on a Saturday.
So it's just getting everyone together, or is there some form where you're trying to get everybody's contact information? Uh, sharing that too, it's it's a joint venture, everyone together and getting information to check on each other?
Yeah, well, some of it is just getting to know each other. So the cor- um, my yard is here, and I touched the corner of a neighbor back there who I had never met before. But her husband died and she's a senior. And so if we were to have a fire, we all want to make sure we know she's there so we can go check on her.
Yeah.
Right? So it's that type of thing, even just knowing who's there. So-and-so has kids, so-and-so has a dog. Um, that type of thing of even just knowing, knowing folks makes a difference in making the communication better. Uh, but we did ask in our little initial flyer, we asked if folks would be interested in learning about resiliency measures that we could take. And of that, we've got uh fifty percent of the responses said absolutely yes, and the other fifty percent were maybe. So we do think that we might have an opportunity to do some further education about um maybe some neighborhood emergency response trainings, where if you just have one or two people in your pods um who who know um some emergency response, they might be able to be there on the scene before EMTs and have some actual helpful um tips to help tee people up.
Awesome. Did you have them respond by email, by drop dropping them in a box?
Yeah, good question. So we had a uh, of the flyer, we gave them two options. We put them information directly, uh, the questions right on the flyer and gave them an address where they could drop it. And there was just a box sitting on a porch. Um, and then I also put a QR code on there. So if folks were tech savvy, they could go ahead to the Google form. And almost everybody used the QR code.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, awesome. That's great.
I may have to be in the neighborhood that day. Just having to just having to walk on it, go, wait a second.
October. Elm Street.
Right, right. Let it out of the bag, watch out.
You guys would be welcome.
Okay, well, thank you very much. You appreciate it.
I just want to say, I really appreciate you taking on this kind of project because having done it myself, I know it is a bit of groundwork and um it does take time. And so I appreciate you letting them have the little sway room there. And um I am hoping that in the future, once we pass this ordinance, that uh we will have something similar on our website, like the garage sale um forum, where it will be something you could fill out quite easily and then it'll give you, you know, suggestions for how to make it go smoothly. And then uh also, you know, the ordinance directions so that you don't do things you're not supposed to do.
Yes.
Hopefully, it'll be very user-friendly when it's all solved.
Yep. Yeah, it's really good. Um, on to to your point, I was gonna say, I know ordinance language is like you shall, you must and things like that. Um, I would say for some uh some folks who aren't used to legislative process, that language can be a little intimidating. Um, and when you're making your application, you may have leeway, even though your ordinance says you shall, you must. Um, you may want to consider saying block parties, you know, instead of, I mean, just trying to put it in the in the positive or an affirmative language instead of in the um authoritarian regulatory, you know, kind of thing. It it just makes it a little bit more friendly for folks who are less familiar.
Good point, yeah.
Good. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Do we have any citizens uh that want to speak against this particular change? I don't see anybody in the room. So we'll close the public hearing and I'm open to a motion from council. I think you were on page, what are we?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one, there you go.
I move approval on first reading of ordinance ten forty-nine and ordinance amending ordinance nine twenty, adding regulations for block parties to title twelve, section twelve point twenty-nine of the Phoenix Municipal Code.
I second.
All right, you have a second, roll call.
Counselor Chester?
Yes.
Counselor Vermillion?
Yes.
Counselor Cambros?
Yes.
And Counselor Dixon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, great. Perfect, yeah. It's eight thirty. I think we're doing very well tonight. And uh we go on now to staff reports and Hannah, you want to introduce yourself because I don't think everyone here has seen you before.
Hello. Yes, she's here.
Well, yeah, I know, but but uh she was here, but she was here with Jacqueline.
Yes, that's true.
Now she's here alone, so that's she's in the, she's in the chip alone tonight, so please.
Thank you. Uh, Hannah Hardy, I'm one of the new city attorneys. Uh, there's two of us. So you'll see me or Jacqueline at meetings. We're hoping to switch on and off as much as we can so that we're both exposed to council and members of the public so that you know who we are and that you can reach out to us and ask us questions. Um, we're here to support staff as they need us and uh council as as these meetings come up. So happy to be here. I don't really have anything to add at this time, but uh we are available.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Happy to have you. Mr. Swanson?
Well, just in to uh, just want to echo the the support we've gotten so far with staff and, you know, some of the questions that have come up have been been great and been back to us right away and given us the answer. That's uh really appreciated. So thank you, Jackie, for
Yeah, it's been fun.
Good. And you you got a little background with Medford, right? You're city.
Yes, I was a former city attorney for um City of Medford for a while. I mostly worked um with their law enforcement and um did a lot of their city prosecutions in municipal court. Um, so eh that's a much larger office. There's about four attorneys that are in-house for the City Attorney of um Office of City of Medford. So we kind of wear a lot of different hats, doing a lot of different things and are a lot more specialized um in different areas. But yeah, it was, it's it's fun to be back in the city attorney role. We do, our firm also um provides services to City of Rogue River, City of Jacksonville. We have a few specialty districts as well. Um, so I I love the city attorney role. I I think it's great to be a part of the community and um the county that we live in and it it feels sometimes being an attorney is not as much fun, you know. You see people in their worst moments, um, and and litigation is pretty contentious. And so having part of my practice be giving back to the community and helping the community feels really good as an attorney.
We're glad to have you.
Yeah, thank you.
And uh I'm already very impressed with Blair. He's stuck it out for the entire meeting. So thanks, thanks again, so ready and coming and giving us your, you know, your background. And I guess we had, we've known each other since the Chamber leadership. Did a project over arts and so, yeah, seeing again. That's it. I just wanted to just call out Blair and thank him again for for his comments tonight and and sticking it out. Just me, Chris.
Good. All right, Mr. Moody, nothing. All right. Uh, well, I I liked to talk last. I always got some interesting things every time, I think. Virginia, nothing tonight?
Uh, well, see, I enjoyed going to both the town hall meetings with you, the business one and the citizen one. And we uh collected some good information with those. Uh, we also had a fabulous time at the second Friday Art Walk. That was so much fun. If any of you haven't gone, you should next month when we do it again. It was really nice to see neighbors and friends and artists and all the colorful little shops and just Phoenix was alive. It was great. And then um I'm also really excited about the upcoming homecoming parade because I will be wearing a big Phoenix costume on my stilts and I'm wondering if you're gonna ride in a fancy car.
I'm gonna ride in a fancy car.
Oh, I hope so. I hope so, riding a fancy car. Please let us know because we have to turn in the application.
Okay, this is great.
I think you sent out an email about that, right?
Yeah, I did get, I did get on it. I have to ask you, she's always over in Culver Dog Park. Anything going on that you hear at the dog park? That's where you get the real information.
I know. I was like, maybe I should have a town hall meeting at the dog park because but I talked to, and Julie is there sometimes. Uh, I see a lot of our residents. Um, we also have visitors from talent like daily. So um it's an interesting combination. It's not the same exact people every day, but there's like a good, I would say there's a good group of like thirty people that it sort of changes out. There's maybe like ten or twelve there at a time. But um a lot of us look out for each other and exchange information. And um there was a birthday party there the other day. One of the neighbors had a birthday. Um, it's fun. It's a fun place. If you don't go, check it out.
Disagree. Um, I have, I have attended the the homecoming parade a few times, worked on it for council for a little bit. Uh, my my favorite spot is the whole family gathers and we watch it at the little salon and watch it and and watch the children collect candy. So that part is great. Um, the five-year anniversary, all media ca- came and the sunflowers were out, which was such a sweet reminder of what happened when everything was gray and burnt and and someone put sunflowers all along the roads after that. And so uh someone, I suspect it was Carolina Marshall, left me a little bouquet by my salon and that was very sweet. And it's very great to see how Phoenix has done. We've been so blessed coming up out of the ashes.
Thank you. Remember?
Yeah, I got to say the woman. Oh, that the uh the staff on county control spending, looking at that report. Uh, almost everything was under budget, so. Just doing the next job on that side of the pledges. The other thing, I I was just listening to the comments about wanting to connect with um neighbors. And uh along the east side, we have kind of a formal network of people to to keep up on everyone that's in the neighborhood. And I'm just wondering, um, neighborhood watch groups would facilitate that somehow? I don't know if we could formalize that or I I'm not sure, but that might be something to look into to see if there's something we can do in a different neighborhood with neighborhood watch groups, so.
Well, it's funny you mention that, the neighborhood watch, because um the chief and I were over at one, gosh, a year ago or whatever, right? And there was a group of people around the elementary school that wanted to do it, but then nothing came of it. That that's the usual challenge. People get fired up about something and they don't follow through. And he and I were there saying, okay, you know, he's ready to support. Chief's ready to support. But it's got to come from the the citizens saying, we want to get involved and and, you know, do the watch duties and and pull together. So that's
Yeah, it requires a local person. As a local person to pick up the mantle and move through it, so you have a passion.
Yep.
Well, you know, one of the thought, after Julia gave the presentation, is in another city, whether it be block parties, if they wanted a police officer to stop by and kind of just, you know, answer questions or that kind of thing, that helped, you know, it wasn't a, but it was just put a face, you know. Interaction was really positive, so we may, you know, we'll play around with that. Short of a watch, maybe if we get more block parties, we can put on the form if the acting would, would want the police officer to stop by to, you know, relate with some of the neighborhood issues. They can be code enforcement, they can be all sorts of things, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's great.
Well, you know, that's really interesting, because the next thing I want to talk about is the jail. The jail, the county jail. I toured it with Nicole. What an experience. How many people in here, you've obviously, I don't have to ask, he's got his PhD in the jail. Anybody else toured the jail here? You've toured it. Okay, Larry's toured it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, and obviously, you know, I was there and they were talking, "This is why we need a new jail." And, oh my God. You know, I didn't realize it was forty years old. And that, just to work there is, my hats are off to those people just working there. I go, "Oh my God." It's just, it's antiquated, and just the lighting system, I understand, the lights are on in the cells and the lights are dim in the hallways and all. And, I mean, it was an experience for me. It just, the feeling was, wow, I never want to be in there, that's for sure. And to work there, boy, you know, that is really something else. It was not a good experience, but it's something that I wanted to do, and I'm glad I did. And obviously, the staff were talking to us, you know, about the conditions and mental health in there. My God. My hats are off to them, what they go through. It's just, it was really amazing for me. Anyway, that was, that was quite an experience. Then, the next day, I was at Oakdale Middle School, and I spent seven hours there with Nicole, who teaches social studies. And now I have new respect for teachers. I could not believe it. I mean, you know, obviously, I've been to school a long time ago. And what I didn't realize is that we were going to have seven periods and lunch in the middle, and that I would have to repeat my performance as mayor seven times that day. And I went, "Wow." She said, "Are you ready?" And, yeah. So she had a bunch of questions up at the front about, you know, what does a mayor do, who elects a mayor, and so on and so forth. I thought, you know, it was quite interesting. And then, and then the kids started, I never signed my name so many times. It was autographs. You know, they all had my autograph, and I went, "Wow, this is first for me." So that was, that was amazing. And then the questions were off the wall. So, one question. Are you ever scared being a mayor? Now, think about how you might answer that question. And the thing that came to my mind was, yes, I am when people give me problems I can't solve. For some reason, that scares me, because I like to be problem-solving at all times. But it was, it was an amazing experience. The kids, I mean, based on my background, they're really not settled down at all. I mean, they were, things are going on elsewhere. And Nicole, you know, tried to get their attention, and in a little bit of time, they settled down. And then, somebody would start, you know, on their thing. And then they had a period where they worked on iPads at some, I don't even know what they were doing, okay? I couldn't even figure it out. Some crazy multiple-choice thing. But, yeah, it was an experience. And the other thing I want to say, this is kind of a strange statement, but I've been in jail one day, and the next day, I'm in this classroom. And it sort of reminded me of a jail, because when I was going to school, there were windows. And in this room, there were no windows, and there was not much up on the walls. It was really bare bones. And I, you know, it was not, I wouldn't want to be a student in that class.
It's an old, old building, too, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, I had to learn, there was a fire drill, and they get up, and then they don't go out. And I asked Nicole, "What's going on?" And she said, "Because we've been told that if you go out, the shooter could be out there, because it's a fire drill. And you have to be careful. You can't go out right away until it's approved." So all these things, and the door to the classroom was really heavy. And I understand why now. So just, all these experiences, you know, it was so new to me. And, wow, wow. But it's just, I like, I like windows, you know. I like to see outside. And I think about the kids, you know, not being able to look outside, so that was really quite an experience.
Get other things.
Yeah, I'm glad I did it. I really am glad I did it. And I'd like to do it again in other schools. But, yeah, we went on and on with questions. It was wild stuff, but fun, they, you know, probably a hundred questions during the day at least. Kids were excited about it. They really were, so I felt good about it. Okay, going on to things here in Phoenix, the art walk, that was historic. It's the first time we've ever done it. And it, Becca Blake and her team pulled it together, and they did a darn good job. And I'm going to go and sit down with them, do a debrief, and see how we can improve it for the future. But they want to do it the second Friday of every month. And just the amazing number of people that came through. I had my chocolate chip cookies there, right out here. We had the mayor's art walk, okay, or not art walk, gallery. We had the mayor's gallery out there, and my chocolate chip cookies. Then the kids are saying, "Well, where's your art?" So now I've got to do paintings for October. They will appear, so I have my art out there. But it was really, really a fun event and amazing, again, historic for Phoenix. And really proud of the group that put that together. I did go to the historical museum. They have dinners every once in a while. I sit down with the group. And it's nice to be in there, because I'm not the oldest person in the room. I love it, you know. They've got somebody in there that's ninety-five years old, so I really enjoy that. So we have a great talk every time I check in with the guy that runs the cemetery. How's everything going? He says, "It's kind of dead around there." Town halls. Okay, we had a business town hall, and a small group of people came. And I don't think there were any unusual issues. People were just, they were wondering about the food to read, this and that, the other thing. I don't recall anything, really. Yeah, it went smoothly, yeah, yeah. Nothing exciting, but we're going to do that again every quarter. And then, we did the citizens' town hall, and there were seventeen people in the room. But what I found interesting is, I did look on Facebook tonight, nine hundred and thirty-eight people have viewed that town hall. I repeat, nine hundred and thirty-eight, and it's still growing. So that tells you something. There must be some interest somewhere, okay? And what I found out, talking to the other mayors, for whatever reason, I am the only mayor in the Rogue Valley that has town halls. Think about that. I think it's really important. I really do. Especially the number nine thirty, and don't forget, we go over a thousand or so. That's a quarter of the population of this town. Really important. And I guess another way I want to relate it, I was at a League of Oregon Cities, I guess the president ran it. We were out in Jacksonville a few days ago. And the presentation was the challenges of asking for more money from your citizens, okay? And there was a big discussion about, well, how do you do that? How do you reach out to? And I finally said, "If I can get to the quarter of my citizens," and it's all built on trust, you remember? I always put that up on the board, trust and communication. If I can get a quarter of my citizens interested in what I'm talking about, when and if the time comes, we have to ask for more money, I feel we're going to have a group of citizens that'll be very, they'll listen to the request for more money and not just get that upset about property taxes going up. They'll listen, and we may get the vote and the confidence we need if we need to ask for more money in the future. So I think town halls are really, really critical, and I wish everyone would do them. I understand, you know, I have a great community. Do it in Ashland. There's a group of people that are always unhappy at something, and I realize that. And we don't have that here. I don't have anybody storming in and yelling about anything, because I think this is part of the culture change that we've gone through, and people are very positive. And there's more and more people volunteering. I mean, I talked to Pam there. She's the chair of Parks and Rec. Believe it or not, we have potential battles about people getting on parks and recs. There's more people, Larry, there's more people interested than seats. We've never had this before, okay? I have to referee that. It's crazy, but it's wonderful. It's really wonderful. So, something's changed here, and it's, it's all for the better. Yeah, you mentioned the pirate parade. We're going to do that. The other thing I want to bring up, that in listening to all the different groups that are doing things in our town, Urban Renewal, Save the Phoenix Wetlands, the Chamber and the Art Group, we've come to the point where I've got to call a community strategy meeting together, to pull them all together. And, you know, Zach, you know, you need to be there, because there's, you know, everybody's so excited about they're doing, doing their own thing, but we need to coordinate, okay? You know, a park, is it going to be all art? Is it going to be all natural? There's differences of opinion that are coming down the pike, and we need to pull together and talk about those and make sure that we listen to everyone. But at some point, we've got to make decisions and move down a path. So I'm going to be working with you, Eric, on pulling that together, but we're going, we have to do that. I can see it. Because I'm getting so many questions independently, and some things conflict with other things that are going on. It's just come to that point. It's a good place to be, because there's so much happening, but we've got to get that all straightened out. Finally, Susan Chester and I'll be, and Eric, you're going to be at the League of Oregon Cities Conference in October. And, because we're not meeting here until after that meeting, so, yeah, we'll be up there getting new ideas. I'm looking forward to it. Cross-speech is very, very important, so I think it's a great thing.
I'm going to have that news interview, too. I forgot about that.
Yeah, you did the news interview on Channel Five. That was a wild thing. I pull her out, and I said, "Come out here," and she doesn't know where he's going, but she trusts me. Like, said, "Stand here," then the camera appears, and then she, I just stand back, and she goes, da-da-da-da-da-da-da. And that's what we want. And, you know, they put her on TV, and that's, you know, she, "Oh, it's great here." They love that. So with that, we're a journey.